So, welcome everyone and Michelle Burge, welcome. Just acknowledge that Council Bernard is en route, Council Ramsey is in the other room, and we have Councils Duran and McCabe phoning in, they're on the phone. So first, I'd like to, we acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Called order, and I would like to give a shout out to Martin Sobey, son of Deputy Mayor Yankoff, who is representing Canada at the Pan American Games. He did come, correct me if I'm wrong, he came forth today in the Triathlon Canada, said that "empty in the tank" at the end, the pride of Prince Edward Island, Martin Sobey runs to fourth in courageous spirit finish. It sounds like something Council Beck would say, "empty in the tank." He will have one final race at the Pan American Games mixed relay. His final World Cup is Saturday, this Saturday, for the season, and I wish him all the best luck. It's a great pride that when we have a Prince Edward Islander running in a world event like the Pan American Games in the triathlon coming forth. So congratulations to Deputy Mayor Yankoff and family. And I have Council Ramsey.
Thank you, your worship, and as I stated a couple weeks ago, Holland College Soccer Girls Team went undefeated this year, and they're in Halifax this past weekend, and they won the Atlantic Championship, and they're hosting the Nationals in Summerside starting this coming Wednesday.
Summerside?
So, I'd like to, pardon me?
Summerside?
Yes, I know. I mean, my granddaughter's on that, so I guess I'll be tracking up to Summerside. But anyway, like, I like to put that out there too, for the Holland College coaching and players, they did a great job all year, thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. Declarations of conflict of interest. Any declarations? Council Duran, Council McCabe, yea or nay?
No.
No, I have none.
Okay, on the agenda, we have Finance Audit and Tender and Administration, the audit financial statements presented by Michelle Burge from MRSB. Strategic Priorities, COMS, and Intergovernmental Cooperation, Letter to the Federal Minister of Housing, Sean Fraser. Number five, third-party discussions in regards to property, and that requires moving into a closed session. Under Sections 119 of the Municipal Government Act, subsection 1A, B, and E. A, commercial information which, if disclosed, would likely be prejudicial to the municipalities or parties involved. 119, subsection 1B, information received in confidence which, if disclosed, would likely be prejudicial to the municipality or parties involved. And subsection 119 of the MGA Municipal Government Act, subsection 1E, a matter still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision, and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. Moved? Moved by Council McKinnon, second by Deputy Mayor Yankoff. Question? All those in favor? Okay. Council Duran?
In favor.
Council McCabe?
In favor.
Okay, ten zero, so can we go to 4A? Presentation from our auditor, Michelle Burge, and Tracy, are we going to put it up on the screen too? Can you do that? So you can follow it along in your, on your surface, but we can also put it up on the screen. I think Betty's going to tap into her file. Good. Okay, Michelle, can you take it over?
I sure can. Thank you very much for having me again this evening to review the audited statements for the city of Charlestown. So first of all, thank you on behalf of our firm for the opportunity to be auditors again this year for the city. And I certainly want to thank Betty and her finance team for their great assistance and cooperation during the audit as well. So what I'll do this evening is just go through the financial statements, highlight some of the significant items in the past year. At the end of my presentation, I'll open up the floor. If anyone has any questions, I'll certainly try and answer any questions that you may have. The first one that we'll be going through is the Charlestown Water and Sewer Corporation, and then we'll go on to the consolidated statements.
So digitally, what page is that? Betty? Okay, so just go to forty-four in your digital copy. And Betty, can you put up, you're going to, it's up there now?
Yeah.
So digital copy's forty-four.
Okay, so the first item in this particular financial statement I want to refer you to is what's called the Independent Auditor's Report, so it's a couple pages in. And so this is obviously where we provide our opinion for the audit on the Charlestown Water and Sewer Corporation. So, under the Independent Auditor's Report issued to the mayor and the members of council, our opinion says that we've audited the financial statements of the Charlestown Water and Sewer Corporation, which comprises Statement of Financial Position at March 31st, 2023, and the Statements of Operations, Changes in Net Debt and Cash flows for the year then ended, and Accompanying Schedules and Notes to the Financial Statements, including a summary of significant accounting policies. So in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the Financial Position of the Charlestown Water and Sewer Corporation at March 31st, 2023, and the Results of Its Operations and its Cash flows for the year then ended, in accordance with the Canadian Accounting Standards for the Public Sector. So this audit opinion would be the same that we have issued for the corporation in the previous years. We call this the Standard Auditor's Report, and do give a clean bill of health on the audit again for the corporation. The remainder of the report would be the same as it has been in previous years as well. So then we'll start with the numbers. It's identified as page one, and probably page forty-six or seventy, forty-nine, sorry, in your package. So this first statement is what's called the Statement of Financial Position. It's at March 31st, 2023, which is the fiscal year-end for the corporation. And we also provide the information for the prior year for March of 2022. So this gives you a snapshot of the financial position of the corporation at that point in time. So the first numbers are what's called financial assets, and these assets are essentially assets that are liquid or near cash. In total, the financial assets for 2023 are about sixteen point eight million. The previous year, they were eighteen point two million, so it's down approximately one point four million. We can see that the cash, the first line, has increased from about nine point seven million to thirteen million, so these would be the operating accounts for the corporation at the end of the year. And they've gone up, and we'll see in a minute, part of the reason why is there was some monies outstanding with the city at the end of the previous year, that those monies had been returned back to the corporation, and obviously have increased the amount in the operating accounts for the corporation. The next significant item would be the accounts receivable, so these would be amounts outstanding from customers of the corporation at the end of the year, approximately about one point seven million dollars outstanding. The previous year was a slight bit higher, as there was outstanding amounts for HST rebates of about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. The capital grants receivable, the next item, approximately five hundred thousand dollars. These are capital funding-related monies outstanding. The biggest part, two significant amounts, one is the Municipal Capital Expenditure Grant, or MCEG, which is the ten percent amount that each municipal body is entitled to from the province of any capital spending, so that's about two hundred and ninety-seven thousand. The other large portion is Fiona Claims outstanding with the province, were about a hundred and ninety-two thousand at the end of the year. And then right below that, the due from related parties, as I mentioned, that's the main reason why the cash has increased, is just some amounts outstanding from the city were reimbursed or repaid during the year. But overall, the financial assets, down from eighteen point two million, down to about sixteen point eight million. Again, just mostly a change in terms of the amounts outstanding with the city. The next information then is the liabilities or the debts and obligations of the corporation. At the end of March of 2023, the liabilities are forty-one point one million, the previous year at forty-two point four million, so they as well are down about one point three million in total. The very first line in liabilities is the accounts payable. These are various amounts outstanding to suppliers, contractors, and they're up from one point eight million to three point two million, an increase of about one point four million. The majority of that relates to capital projects outstanding at the end of the year, about two million of that total relating to amounts outstanding for contractors and holdbacks specifically around the St. Peters Road and Belvedere Roundabout, some work done in terms of, at the wastewater treatment plant, as well as Garfield Street Reconstruction, so a number of projects, bills outstanding at the end of the year. The next significant item in liabilities would be the deferred revenue, and this all would be related to the gas tax funds for the corporation. So they are consistent between the two years, so there's an additional a million dollars that was allocated of the city's overall gas tax funding, so a million dollars has been allocated to the corporation. And approximately a million was spent during the year, so obviously the balance remained fairly consistent with last year. So of that million dollars received during the year, and spent, the majority of that was on street rehabilitation, and some work on water supply boosters station, that's about a million dollars in total. And the last, and of course, the most significant part of the liabilities is a line that's identified as due to a related party, and these are actually the loans relating to the corporation, and it's reflected as due to a related party, just because the loans are actually all in the name of the city. The city is the borrower for all kind of capital-related projects. When borrowings are undertaken, a portion of it is allocated to the utility based on the requirement of the utility to reimburse and to replenish for capital funding. So, as I mentioned, all of those loans are in the name of the city, however, the corporation does assume responsibility for those repayments. So at the end of March of 2023, all of those loans are about thirty-three point nine million for the utility portion, and that's down from thirty-six point five million in the previous year. So that's about two point six million that's been repaid, so that's making regular repayments. There was no new debt advanced at this point in time, I know there has been, obviously, since the end of the year. So overall, the liabilities are down from forty-two point four million, down to forty-one point one, with the significant part of that obviously being the repayment or reduction of the loans during the year is the biggest part of that. So you have financial assets of sixteen point eight million for the corporation, the overall liabilities are forty-one point four million, so obviously more liabilities than obviously available liquid cash to pay off everything. So there is a net debt for the corporation of twenty-four point two million, the previous year at twenty-four point one million, so very similar overall, obviously, you know, a small change there in total. The last part of this statement then is the section called non-financial assets. The biggest part of, the two larger items here is inventory of supplies, so that's increased from two point two million up to about two point four million. So those are the materials and inventory at the pollution control and various materials. And then the larger portion of the non-financial assets is the lines identified as a tangible capital asset, so this would be all the infrastructure of the corporation. So all of the major infrastructure in terms of any land, buildings, equipment, the treatment plant. So as you can see, at the end of March of 2023, that's a hundred and thirty-three point five million is the overall investment in that infrastructure, and that is up from a hundred and thirty point three million in the previous year. So for the corporation during the year, there was about six point two million dollars of additions during the year. There's about three point eight million of projects that were still ongoing at the end of the year, in terms of the wastewater lift station and upgrades at Belvedere and St. Peters Road. And then projects completed during the year were some of the Belvedere Roundabout and Harley Street rehabilitation, and of course, vehicles and equipment purchased during the year. So in total, that's about six point two million. And during the year, there would have been also as well about three million dollars of amortization. So overall, the non-financial assets are about a hundred and thirty-six million in total, and the previous year at a hundred and thirty-two million, of course, with that tangible capital assets or infrastructure increasing during the year. And so then overall, then, the accumulated surplus then of the corporation at the end of the year, which is a combination of the net debt subtracted off the non-financial assets, leaving an overall accumulated surplus of a hundred and eleven point eight million, the previous year at a hundred and eight point five million, so there's an increase of approximately three point two million total. The majority of that, obviously, we'll see in a moment, is related to the capital funding revenue, which has increased the overall accumulated surplus. So overall, in terms of the financial position, as I said, the net debt being the key item on that particular page, staying fairly consistent, and obviously continuing to reduce the regular repayments. On the next page is the Statement of Operations for the corporation. So again, this is for the year-end at March of 2023 compared to March of 2022 as well, with providing the information for the budget of 2023. So the first information is the revenues for the corporation. So first of all, the budget revenues were fourteen point one million. The actual revenues for the corporation were fourteen point two million, so it's about eight hundred and forty thousand higher than the original budget that was approved. The previous year, the revenues were thirteen point three million, so that's an increase of about nine hundred and sixty thousand from the previous year. So of course, the very first line is the most significant portion of the revenues for the corporation, the metered sales. So the budget was eleven point four million, the actual revenues were eleven point five million, and the previous year at ten point seven million, so that's an increase of almost about eight hundred thousand, and almost about a hundred thousand more than the original budget. Of course, the budget did include a five point one percent increase in the rates for the utility customers during the year, so that is obviously the key part of the reason for the increase from the prior year. And of course, with the continued development, additional properties added within the city limits, obviously that increases as well consumption and customers during the year, so that has also increased as well. The fire protection, the city of Charlestown, that's as the budget amount at one point two million. The wastewater treatment fees from the town of Stratford, so that's consistent with the prior year, slightly less than the budget. And then the other kind of significant amounts here would be in terms of un-metered sales, consistent with last year, services billed slightly down from last year, and then government grants at about two hundred thousand, up from a hundred and nineteen thousand in the previous year. The majority of that being about a hundred and ninety-two thousand, of that is for Fiona Claims. Yes?
Mike?
I'm just wondering why the wastewater treatment fee is down from last year, even though we budgeted six hundred thousand, it's down lower than last year. I'm wondering how the fees, how the total can be less.
It's only about ten thousand less, it's fairly consistent, and it's obviously based on the agreement with the town of Stratford in terms of that formula, in terms of the amount that they are to pay.
Yeah, I know, I would have thought that would have been a lot higher.
You thought it would be six hundred if it was?
Well, we budgeted six hundred because of the extra waste that was coming over into the city. And I just don't, it doesn't seem to be ten thousand dollars less than last year, surprises me. I'm not sure how it could be less. You've got more building going on, you've got more treatment coming over. Unless this is for the haulers.
What's that?
Unless this is the haulers, they take their septic to the plant.
No, this would be?
No.
From Stratford?
This is from Stratford, yes.
This is Stratford?
Yeah.
So it was budgeted for six hundred?
Yeah.
And it came in at four oh three?
Four seventy-three.
Yeah.
Is it not all based on flow?
Just once, wastewater treatment fees, we budgeted six hundred, right?
Yeah.
And the forecast was four hundred and three. Is that what I have?
Well, last year, twenty-two, you had four hundred and eighty-three.
That's what, I'm following the line.
It's four eighty-three in the previous year and four hundred and seventy-three thousand in the current year. The amounts? thousand in the current year. The amounts per month were all fairly consistent. You know, it's almost about forty thousand every month. There's not any that were significantly different, and I know the very first month, it was about thirty-four thousand, that first March of two thousand and twenty-one. So that's, it was up slightly from there, but it has been fairly consistent each month going forward.
Okay, no, it is what it is.
Counselor Dran?
No, I just said there, it's all based on the amount of flow, is it not? That's where we make the money. So if it's down, then the flow would be down, if I'm not mistaken.
And that's my problem, Counselor Dran. I just don't know how the flow can be down. The population's not going down in Stratford. It's going up. That's why I was flagging, trying to figure out why it's down. The flow should be increasing. Anyway, okay, thank you.
So, Michelle, I'm referring to our budget book for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, and we have here wastewater treatment fees, six hundred thousand. Forecast was four hundred and three. So your audit shows that we were off by seventy thousand. If you're saying it's four seventy-three, correct?
I'm not sure the other number that you're referring to there, but...
The numbers in our budget book that we presented, the budget.
Okay.
Guess that's why we have audits. Okay.
Yep.
Counselor Ramsey?
And I was wondering the same question. Was there not, when we signed the agreements, there was a set price from Stratford? Or, like, maybe I'm wrong. I don't understand.
Counselor Dran, was there a set price?
No, it's all based on the flow rate. That's, you know, we tried it when we put this in place. It was going for twenty-five percent, and then the government of the day put it down to fifteen. So, I mean, it's all based on the flow. That's where money comes from.
Yeah, it's a meter.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So just, oh, sorry.
Yeah. Counselor Dran, you said the government, we had it at twenty-five percent, and the government moved it down to fifteen? That was a resolution that was passed by council to accept the recommendation for fifteen percent, what was it, administrative fee? From the town of Stratford. And I recall that I felt that the administrative fee was too low, and I didn't support it for that very reason. So I'm not sure. It was the province dictating the city council. I think council had the discretion as to whether or not we would accept fifteen percent or twenty-five percent. So at the time, and I still feel the same way, fifteen percent is a sweetheart deal.
Well, with all due respect, Counselor Twill, we were told that's what it is in place. But by the government of the day, you know, Stratford was going to look at their own wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the government stepped in and said, no, we will not push this forward because they would have to have the province's approval to get federal funding. And the province stepped in and said, no, it'll be at a rate of fifteen percent. So we didn't have a say of saying, no, we want twenty-five. The rate was set, and that was it.
Yeah, it's fifteen percent surcharge. It's not fifteen percent. It's a fifteen percent surcharge. Counselor Twill, just go ahead.
So again, obviously, make that recommendation, but at the end of the day, it was a decision by city council on a vote by a resolution. So, yeah, we might be off track, but the bottom line is, it was fifteen percent. And I'll reiterate again, I thought it was a sweetheart deal for the town of Stratford.
You know what, Counselor Dran, we'll just take that back to the next committee, standing committee meeting for water and wastewater to get clarification. Good?
Sure. Yeah, no problem. There's no question there what it is, but I'll take it back and we'll discuss it.
Okay. Michelle?
Okay. So then, just to kind of summarize again in terms of the overall revenues for the corporation, so as I mentioned, the budget was fourteen point one million. The actual revenues were fourteen point two million, the previous year at thirteen point three, with an increase overall from last year of about nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, which is about seven percent increase. Of course, that first line being the metered sales, of course, being the largest increase, as was approved with an increase in the rates. The next information then is the expenditures for the corporation. So the budget for two thousand and twenty-three was fourteen point nine million. The actual expenditures were thirteen point three million, and the previous year, they were twelve point seven million. So they are less than the original budget by about one point six million, and they are up approximately six hundred thousand from the previous year. So some of the significant items here, of course, the amortization of tangible capital assets is about three million, as was budgeted, slightly less than budget and comparable to last year, and that's on all of the infrastructure in terms of amortizing or depreciating those assets over their expected useful life. The debt service charges, those are less than budget and lower than last year. As I mentioned, there was no additional debt that was taken on during the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, and down from the previous year, as I mentioned, because of the debt repayment as scheduled during the year. Then we have the Fiona expenses, which are about three hundred thousand. So these would be costs relating to cleanup, some rentals, as well as some contractors helping in terms of transferring, in terms of lift stations. The insurance and property taxes are very similar, a hundred and fifty-six thousand this year. They were a hundred and forty thousand in the previous year. The office and committee expenses, again, under the budget, so seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand this year. They were approximately six hundred and ninety-seven thousand in the previous year. A couple of the items that are up is, this particular line does include the inflationary increase for staff increases during the year, so that's about a hundred and eighty-three thousand. It also includes additional amounts for contract services, mostly relating to IT services and various software and equipment that is used by the corporation. The previous year had included costs relating to the growth management study, so there was additional costs last year of about a hundred and fifteen thousand. Then we have the pension expense. So this is based on the actuary report and the employees on the plan. So there is a small amount of net income overall compared to an expense in the prior year of about twenty-four thousand. Then we have the repairs and maintenance. So the budget at about three point one million. The actual repairs and maintenance at about two point seven million, and the previous year at two point four million. So those have increased approximately three hundred and ten thousand between the two years. Some of the significant items, so again, in terms of additional operational, would be chemical-related costs up about thirty thousand dollars, some high-velocity cleaning and inspections of the various lines and equipment. That was approximately a hundred thousand dollars during the year. Additional inventory items, as we noted on the first page, there is more in terms of inventory supplies. So there was additional amounts purchased during the year, approximately a hundred thousand. So those are the key and significant items there in terms of additional repairs during the year. Utilities, the budget was one point four million, the actual one million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, fairly consistent with last year. And as was, most people would expect, it's the fuel costs, of course, that have gone up from the previous year, and they've gone up about fifteen thousand. And then the very last line, which is, of course, the most significant part of the expense for the corporation, is wages and benefits for all staff of the corporation. So the budget was at four point two million. The actual expenditure in wages was three point eight million, the previous year at three point seven million. So they're up approximately a hundred and eighteen thousand in total. The administrative wages were actually down during the year, approximately a hundred and seventy thousand. Works and engineering wages are about two point seven million of that total, and they are up about two hundred thousand from the previous year. And the pollution plant wages are about a million, and they are up about eighty-two thousand. So all of those kind of increases relating to additional staff hired during the year. As I mentioned, the inflationary increase was included on another line this year. So those amounts are not included. Those are additional amounts in terms of kind of increases in staffing positions during the year. As I mentioned, that increase in the inflationary amount is under the line of office and committee expenses. So overall, as I mentioned, the expenses are under budget approximately one point six million, but they are up from the previous year. So the overall result for the corporation initially, when the budget was being prepared, it was anticipating a deficit of about eight hundred and four thousand. However, we can see the line below for the municipal capital expenditure grant was included as part of considering the overall surplus or deficit for the corporation. So it would have been anticipating a surplus of about two hundred thousand. The overall result is showing an operating surplus of about eight hundred and seventy-two thousand for the year compared to the previous year, an operating surplus of about five hundred and forty-four thousand. So it is up from last year and better than budget, mostly because expenses are under budget, as I mentioned, about one point six million in total. The other information here on this particular page, the other revenues and expenditures. So the first item is the government transfers for capital. So this would be all capital funding for projects during the year. So the budget was at eight point six million, the actual at two point one million, and that two point one million would be about a million from gas tax funding and about one million in ISIP or infrastructure funding for the projects during the year. The previous year at three point five million, so there was a lot more done in the previous year, and that was almost the completion of the wastewater treatment plant. So there was more funding in that particular year. The amount for the budget, obviously, you know, when the budget is prepared, there's an anticipation that projects will, you know, get completed on a timely basis, and obviously, that's something out of your control at times in terms of contractors. So that obviously is a little bit less because there are still projects carried over. Then we have the municipal capital expenditure grant. So the budget was a million. The actual is about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and that, again, would correlate to, you know, projects not getting fully completed before the end of the year. So that's about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, down from last year, again, because there was less in terms of capital projects. There was a budget of extraordinary expenses, and there wasn't anything of that used this year or in the prior year. So it's about two point three million of other revenues for the year, four point, sorry, about four million in the previous year. So that is getting added to the operating surplus to leave the overall annual surplus at about three point two million, where the previous year was four point six million. And I always try to highlight that really the important line is the operating surplus line, really, because that's the day-to-day operations of the corporation, and obviously, anything under the other revenue which relates to more capital projects can fluctuate quite widely, depending on a year where you may have significant projects ongoing. So overall, you know, a very positive year for the corporation. As I said, it's showing an overall operating surplus and better than initially was anticipated with expenses being a bit lower.
Counselor Dran?
No, that's great. Those are good numbers there, and, you know, our manager's doing a good job of keeping things under control. That's great to see.
Is he going to have to raise the rates again?
No, no, keep them under control. Thank you.
The additional information on those financial statements are some notes and disclosures, but I've kind of gone over a lot of that detail. Is there any other questions on those corporation financial statements?
Any questions? Counselor Twill?
Michelle, for your presentation. So if you look at this year's budget and the projections, basically, it's status quo, right?
Right, yes.
For all intents and purposes.
Correct.
Just, you know, the capital projects that you outlined, nonetheless, it still is status quo. What do you, just from your experience, what do you project, say, for the next five years, primarily status quo, or do you see anything out of the ordinary that we could anticipate, that could or might happen, you know, looking five years down the road?
Well, probably the biggest things, obviously, is, you know, somewhat unpredictable, but inflation is probably the biggest concern for most businesses, just in terms of what is everything going to cost? Is it going to cost five percent more or ten percent more? So those are things that are obviously unknown and obviously unforeseen at this point, but those are things that obviously have to be taken into consideration, you know, each year, and making sure that you're keeping up with, you know, what those additional costs might be. The second part, obviously, is going to be in terms of interest costs. I mean, obviously, prime has gone up. You know, it might go up another certain amount in the next, you know, six months. Not, you know, there's uncertainty again in terms of whether that'll come down. I'd have to say that these are probably the more normal rates that are probably going to be going forward. I don't know that we'll ever see the days again, probably of two percent, three percent. I think, you know, the five and six percent are probably going to be the new norm. And so obviously, again, that's going to have to be taken into consideration that, you know, debt cost is going to be higher, you know, going forward. I think those are the two key things that are probably, you know, unforeseen, unknown at this point, and will have an impact certainly on the corporation and certainly in the city, you know, going forward.
Counselor Twill?
Again, with the anticipated growth and development here in the city, the northern part of the city, again, what would the impact be on this corporation, the Water and Sewer Corporation? Again, looking at maybe five, 10 years out, you know, with all this demand for housing and whether it be multi-unit facilities, how do you see that impacting, affecting the budget?
Yeah, I mean, that's one positive thing that's obviously going to offset, you know, those additional costs. You know, you're in a great position where there is significant continued growth and potential for growth within, you know, the city. So that obviously means there's additional consumption, additional building, additional units being added, of course. That means there's more revenues, you know. So maybe at the end of the day, there will be, you know, nominal or minimal effect for the corporation overall because those additional revenues are hopefully going to offset, you know, the additional costs that you may have. But, you know, every year, you obviously have to revisit that, and that's where you determine whether you need to, you know, change the rates to obviously make sure that you are covering all your expenses if, you know, when you get to the next budget year and know what the new debt rates might be, what inflation might have an impact. Those things will have to be considered every year. It's pretty hard to, I think, set something for five to 10 years because there is so many unknowns and so many things that obviously can fluctuate year to year, honestly.
But that's why, Michelle, when you mentioned the cost of contributing to the growth management study, I think it was a hundred and five thousand, that study's not only going to be important for water and wastewater, planning and development, parks and recreation, public works. So it's a very comprehensive study. So hopefully, we'll be able to get through that sometime there. Acting CAO, Sue Fraser? Okay. Do you want to go to the corporation?
The city?
The city corp?
Yep.
So, Patty, that's, what page? We just went back up to the top, right to the top, right to the top.
So the next statement that I'll review with you is, it's called the City of Charlottetown, the consolidated financial statements. So again, these are at March 31st, two thousand and twenty-three, which is the fiscal year end for the city. And just to kind of highlight what obviously we mean when we're talking about consolidated financial statements. So within these financial statements, obviously, will be the city, the Water and Sewer Corporation that we just reviewed. It will include Cary because that is obviously a component that's identified to be controlled by the city. So that's a hundred percent of Cary is included in here. It does include the Civic Center at eighty-five percent because of, again, the relationship with the city. And we'll see as well that the Charlottetown Area Development Corporation, they're not consolidated here, but certainly a portion of the profits of that corporation are reflected here as a fifteen percent is what the city's ownership is in that particular organization. So obviously, these statements are not just the operating day-to-day of the city. It does obviously include other things as well because of the, as I said, requirement to reflect consolidated financial statements for the city. So those items are reflected here, and they will have an impact, of course, in terms of the operations of those particular organizations and corporations. So again, I'll go through the financial statements and highlight some of the significant items, and we can answer questions at the end. So the first item I will refer you to again is the independent auditors report in terms of providing our opinion for the consolidated financial statements. So it's issued to the mayor and the members of council. So under the opinion, it says that we've audited the consolidated financial statements of the City of Charlottetown, which comprise the consolidated statement of financial position at March 31st, two thousand and twenty-three, and the consolidated statements of operations, changes in net debt and cash flow for the year then ended, and accompanying schedule... flow for the year then ended, and accompanying schedules and notes to the consolidated financial statements, including a summary of significant accounting policies. So in our opinion, the accompanying consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the City of Charlottetown at March 31, 2023, and the results of its operations and its cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with the Canadian accounting standards for the public sector. So similar to the audit report that we just provided for the corporation, this as well is the standard auditor's report, and we do give a clean bill of health again, on the consolidated financial statements for the City of Charlottetown. So then we'll start with the numbers. So the first item here is called the consolidated statement of financial position. So again, because they are consolidated, this would include the city, the Water and Sewer Corporation, CARRY, East Link, and any other kind of committees or organizations as part of the city. So again, we have for the year ended March 31, 2023, and providing information for the prior year for March of 2022. So the first information is, again, the financial assets or those assets that are liquid or cash, near cash. So in total, at the end of March of 2023, the financial assets are fifty-six point nine million. The previous year, they were thirty-eight point three million. So that's an increase of about eighteen point six million between the two years. So the very first two numbers there are the cash and restricted cash. So they are thirteen point million of cash, nine point nine million in the previous year. And those are the amounts that we just saw in the utility corporation in terms of the amounts in the utility. The restricted cash at nineteen point five million is up from sixteen point two million in the previous year. The majority of this relates to the gas tax funds. So there's about sixteen million on hand at the end of the year, as well as amounts restricted for the switch program, for the tourism accommodation levy, and there is restricted funds for sick and post-retirement benefits for staff as well. So those have all increased from last year. Then we have the accounts receivable, so they're at five point eight million, the previous year at four point five million. So the increase, the majority of that relates to about a million dollars additional outstanding for HST rebates for the city. And we'll see, obviously, in a few minutes, but there was significant capital projects for the city overall, so there is more in terms of HST rebates outstanding. As well included in that five point eight million of accounts receivable is about two point five million dollars in terms of outstanding amounts, in terms of kind of trade-related balances. So as we just saw in the Water and Sewer, one point seven million of that is the Water and Sewer Corporation, and about one point five million for the city, which would be some recreation amounts outstanding relating to various fees and licenses. The next item is the capital grants receivable, so they're at about eleven point five million, the previous year at five point two million, so they're up about six point three million. The major increase is an outstanding amount of Fiona claims at the end of March was about seven million dollars. So that's a significant kind of increase from the past year. Also significant in that number is about three point seven million of municipal capital expenditure grant, or the 10% grant from the province on capital funding. Couple of last items in the financial assets, so the investment in government business enterprise. This is where we would reflect the ownership and percentage of kind of the earnings of CADC. So that's up from one point six million to one point eight. So the fifteen percent of the city's share of the profits for the year is approximately a hundred and sixty-one thousand, and that's the increase during the year. And the very last item in the financial assets is the loans receivable, and this would relate to the switch program. So these are the amounts outstanding to residents who obviously are undertaken in participating in that program. So at the end of the year, that's about four point four million dollars outstanding from residents. So that is three hundred and twenty-three loans outstanding at the end of March. It was only thirty-six last year, as you can see, quite a significant increase, about four million dollars in total. So overall, the financial assets are at fifty-six point nine million, up from thirty-eight point three million last year, about eighteen point six million in total. Cash and restricted cash being the biggest part of that at almost nine million. The receivables up approximately seven million, and then the loan receivables up about four million. The next information then is the liabilities or the overall debts and obligations of the city, again, on a consolidated basis. So in total, at the end of March of 2023, the liabilities are a hundred and eighty-five point three million, the previous year at a hundred and forty-two point nine million, so that's an increase of about forty-two million in total. One of the significant items is the very first line there identified as bank indebtedness from seven point four million up to thirty-four point six million. And that, majority of that obviously relates to amounts borrowed on like line of credit operating lines for basically paying capital projects during the year. So it was only after the end of the year that those were kind of replenished and term loans were actually taken out. So it's a bit of a timing issue that still were reflected as lines of credits or borrowings at the end of March. The next significant item would be right below that in terms of the accounts payable from nineteen point three million to thirty-nine million. So again, these would be all about outstanding in terms of, you know, with contractors, suppliers. One key item I will reflect here, of course, this does include the amount owing back to the province for overpayment of property taxes, so that's about three point four million included in that total. It does, yes, yeah. So in that accounts payable is reflected the obligation to repay amounts that had been paid, overpaid by the province. The other significant portion of that thirty-nine million is basically capital-related projects and balances outstanding for holdbacks and bills outstanding for contractors, suppliers working on those various projects. So that's about sixteen million of that total. And up from the previous year, the capital amounts outstanding at the end of last year were about five million, there's sixteen million this year, so a significant increase there. The deferred revenue is the next kind of one significant item in terms of liabilities. The majority of this would be two items. First of all, there's five million dollars that was received from CMHC before to the end of the year under the Rapid Housing Initiative for 21 affordable units. So that's five million dollars that had been received but had been spent before the end of March. The other significant portion would be about four point five million dollars of gas tax funding that hadn't, again, had been received but hadn't been spent before the end of the year. The next item in terms of the sick leave and post-employment benefits, so obviously with all employees of the city and the corporation, there is obligations for amounts outstanding for sick leave, a number of days accumulated every month, and for post-employment in terms of an amount paid to employees based on if they've met 10 continuous years of service with the city, and then obviously amount paid based on that service. So these are based on actuarial reports that have been completed. So the total between the corporation and the city is six point four million. So of that total, about three point six million of that is for sick leave, and post-employment or kind of severance is about two point nine million. So it's down a little bit from last year. The, it's the post-employment or kind of the severance portion, and that is down from the previous year, and there was a number of retirements during the year, so that did reduce the balance. And there is a small amount of due to related parties, and those are amounts that are outstanding with the utility, or sorry, with the pensions for the utility and for the city. As you can see, that remains the same as last year. And then the very last line in terms of the liabilities would be the long-term debt. So that's at ninety-one point four million, down from ninety-five point eight million in the previous year. And again, because this is on a consolidated basis, this would be the corporation amount that we just saw, about thirty-three million, and as well than the city amount. It is down overall from last year, so there was repayments during the year of about seven million dollars in total. And there was a new amount advanced during the year, and that relates to the switch program. So from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, under that arrangement for the switch program, about three point three million dollars has been advanced additional during the year. So that's a loan that's at zero percent with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. So overall, as I said, the liabilities are up from a hundred and forty-two million up to a hundred and eighty-five million, up about forty-two million dollars. So the two key items there being obviously that first line of kind of bank indebtedness or borrowings for kind of capital projects, and then additional amounts still outstanding on those capital projects and to the province in our accounts payable. So their overall, the financial assets are fifty-six point nine million for 2023. The overall liabilities are a hundred and eighty-five point three million. So the net debt for the city on a consolidated basis, again, is a hundred and twenty-eight point three million, and that is up from a hundred and four million in the previous year. And again, a lot of that to do with capital projects during the year, and not funded by debt at this point in time, but funded, you know, in temporary lines of credit or operating line at the end of the year. As we just saw, obviously, a portion of that is for the Water and Sewer Corporation, so the net debt of the corporation was twenty-four million. So that means is about a hundred and four million will be the city portion of the net debt. So then the last part of the statement is the non-financial assets. Again, the major portion of this would be the first line of tangible capital assets, now at three hundred and thirty-eight million, up from two hundred and ninety-nine million in the previous year. So again, this would be all of the infrastructure within the city. During the year, the total capital spending was about fifty-one million dollars in total. As we just saw in the Water and Sewer Corporation, that was about six million. So obviously, the city capital projects during the year was about fifty-one million dollars that was spent. There's about twenty million of that is projects that were still kind of in various stages of completion, obviously being Simmons and the Public Works Building. That was about twenty million during the year. And then we have eight million dollars that was spent on road infrastructure. We have about four million dollars on the Beach Grove Culvert, about four million dollars on land and land improvements, about four million dollars on buildings, which is Mount Edward Road, and obviously work done here at City Hall for roof and HVAC, and then various others, equipment during the year. So, you know, a fairly significant amount of projects undertaken during the year for a total of, as I said, about forty-four million in total for the city. Then we have the inventory of supplies, about three million dollars up from two point eight million the previous year. So this would include the amounts we just saw in the Water and Sewer Corporation for the materials, as well as what's at the pollution control. And then also as well would include any inventory for Public Works and Parks and Recreation. The other item kind of that changed a little bit this year in the line that's identified is intangible assets, so that's gone up about two hundred and seventy thousand, and that would be the costs relating to the official plan. So those are costs incurred to date, obviously not completed at the end of March. So overall, the non-financial assets are three hundred and forty-two million, up from three hundred and three million in the previous year, again, with almost about fifty million dollars in capital projects during the year. So with a net debt of a hundred and twenty-eight million, non-financial assets of three hundred and forty-two million, the overall result is showing an accumulated surplus of about two hundred and fourteen million for the city on a consolidated basis, up from a hundred and ninety-eight million from the previous year, about sixteen point seven million increase, and I'll go over that in just a second. So then on the next page is what's identified is the consolidated statement of operations. So again, this is for the year ended March of 2023 compared to March of 2022, as well as information on the budget for 2023. So the first information is the various revenues, and again, we are calling this consolidated statement of operations, so it does include the city, Water and Sewer Corporation, CARRY, East Link, and other kind of committees that are part of the city. So initially, the budget was anticipating that revenues in total for 2023 would be seventy-nine point three million. The actual revenues are ninety-six point five million, so that's about seventeen million more than the original budget. The previous year, the actual revenues were about seventy-eight million, so it's about eighteen million more than last year as kind of consistent with what's more than the budget. So a couple of the significant item here, items here, of course, the property taxes, the very first line is the major source of revenue for the city, the budget at forty point one million, the actual revenues for property taxes at forty-four point one million, the previous year at thirty-eight point five million. So that's about an eight million dollar increase. So there wasn't any change in the property tax rate during the year, so that is all relating to development during the year as well. Obviously, the city does benefit from the assessed values going up each year by the province, so there's obviously an inflationary increase there every year, but of course would be a major portion of development and new properties within the city during the year. So that's an overall increase of about eight million. The government transfers for operations, the budget was sixteen million, the actual at twenty-four million in the previous year at sixteen million, again, an increase of about eight million dollars. So the reason for the increase of that eight million is about seven million from Fiona relief claims. So those are amounts that were submitted to the province, so that's an additional amount during the year. The other significant portion of the, that line of government transfers for operations is the municipal grant from the province, so that's sixteen million dollars as was budgeted for the year. Then we have the Water and Sewer, which we just saw in the previous corporation statement, so those revenues did increase about a million dollars from twelve million up to thirteen million, again, with those rates that had been approved to increase during the year. The next line is then recreation, so the budget was three point nine million. The actual revenues for recreation are five point six million, and the previous year they were four point five million, so that's an increase of about one point one million. And of course, again, because we are including these as consolidated, that does include CARRY revenues, which are about three point five million of that total. It does include the Civic Centre, which is about one point four million, and both of those are up about a million each, so that's the main reason for the increase in the recreation revenues there. Then we have the licenses, so the budget was about one point one million, the actual is a little over two million dollars, and the previous year at one point two million. So those are an increase of about seven hundred and seventy thousand, and that would be in terms of the building permits. So they're up about seven hundred and fifty thousand, again, with obviously increased development during the year. One of the major ones there actually is Simmons. That is probably about two hundred thousand of that increase during the year. Then we have the tourism accommodation levy, so the budget was one point one million, then the actual is one million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, the previous year at seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, so an increase of, again, about nine hundred and fifty thousand. And that would all correlate to, again, you know, in terms of increased tourism, more traffic, you know, within the tourism area here in the city. Yes?
Our acting CAO has a question.
Certainly.
Michelle, I'm just trying to get clarification, especially for anyone's that, anyone that's watching online. When you talk about the Parks and Recreation revenue and the fact that you're considering the revenue from Civic Centre and the Capital Area Recreation, Inc. operations, are you considering our shareholder percentage of that revenue? Are you considering they're a hundred percent of the revenue in your statements?
Yeah, so.
Because there's been a couple of references to CARRY being controlled by the city. We're a majority shareholder. We don't have a hundred percent control over CARRY. We're the majority shareholder, same as we are with the Civic Centre. So I guess there, there might be some confusion for anyone listening that, that they are, in fact, separate legal entities, but it, there's factors related to our statements that impact them. So just clarification on that, please.
Certainly, yeah. So with CARRY, a hundred percent of those revenues and a hundred percent of expenses, which we'll see under recreation expenses, for CARRY are included here because the qualification in terms of determining whether you have control is, has been determined that the city does control that particular organization.
We have eighty-seven percent.
Pardon me?
We have, we have the majority shareholder.
Yes, you're the majority shareholder, yeah. So there's factors in terms of the accounting determination of how it's determined whether the, whether the city controls that corporation, and those factors have been met in terms of those accounting standards.
Yeah, this, this is only fiscally speaking, not.
Yes, yes.
That's not the management, that's.
Yes, exactly. This is, those factors, there's, you know, four or five different factors has obviously determined whether their control exists, and if those factors have been met, then we're required to reflect the operations of that particular organization. So that's been determined that the city does control that particular organization, so a hundred percent of those revenues and a hundred percent of the expenses for CARRY are reflected. In terms of the Civic Centre, it's.
Counselor Twill.
Yeah, I want to follow up on what our CAO pointed out, is that if you look at CARRY, it is a separate legal entity, and she's correct.
Yep.
It's a separate organization, it is a separate corporation. So I guess I'm confused when you say we have control. We might have appointed a majority on the board, but in terms of any type of influence in the decision-making process, we're, the only involvement we have is when we make sure that they're financially sound, but in terms of the decision-making, we're not involved with that aspect of CARRY. I mean, they have a separate board, it's a separate corporation, separate decision-making, so I'm not so sure. It seems to be, seems to be vague to me, because I was always led to believe that was an entirely separate corporation, even though the City of Charlottetown funds eighty-seven percent.
Yeah, and so those are a couple of factors that obviously take into consideration, because, as you mentioned, you have appointed and you. as you mentioned, you have appointed and you have the authority to appoint.
Four members.
Four members of the board, and so that obviously means that the city has control. It's a different kind of definition of operational day-to-day management. That's a different kind of established standards or whatever. Unfortunately, the, yeah, for the accounting standards and, you know, tax standards, everybody has the word called control. And when control, as I said, there's a different number of criteria to identify whether the city controls that. So two factors that obviously helped contribute toward that is because you do appoint four members on the board, and so you do have de facto control over those individuals that are appointed, and you do contribute 87%. So again, that, you know, identifies control. There's other, you know, other factors as well, but those are the two significant ones that would identify that for accounting and financial statement purposes, you do control that particular organization. They are, you know, managed and run by that board. They do the day-to-day. You know, the city is not necessarily involved unless required, but those factors do come into consideration when, for financial statement purposes, we do have to include, as I mentioned, 100% of CARRY, their revenues and expenditures because of those determinations. With in terms of the Civic Center, the determination is that there's an 85% kind of control of that particular organization. So 85%, again, different de facto.
Eighty.
Oh, sorry, it's 80, sorry, sorry, yeah. So.
Eighty.
So 80% is reflected here because of that particular, again, control. Those two organizations have their own audits completed, their own financial statements are completed, as I said, have different management operations, but those factors obviously do come into consideration in terms of whether we have to, for financial statement purposes, and our accounting standards require us to do include those here, yeah.
Just to follow up, Michelle, just just so we don't lose it through the presentation, is that in your notes, you speak about CARRY's, again, on page 20, you speak about CARRY again, and Stratford doesn't contribute to capital. So just when you're doing your final draft, just to note that Stratford is not a contributor to the capital. It's 87% CARRY, 13% UPEI, and then if there's any other funding programs out there, that gets factored in, and then the 87-13 kicks in after that. So it's just a small a small edit required on on that note on page 20 with regards to that program.
We contribute to both budgets, operational and capital.
And capital, 87%.
And also, we assume the debt.
Right.
So the only other question I have on that, Michelle, is is the Honeywell project, is CARRY and East Link Centers repayment of their Honeywell projects factored in to the indebtedness to the city in in the statements anywhere?
Yes, they are.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Twill?
Yeah. So having heard that clarification, we're not involved in the day-to-day operations. We're really not involved with the capital. Those decisions are made at the board level. Of course, they come to the city's city of Charlottetown for funding. So when we talk about control, I come back to decision-making. So our, again, I'll reiterate, our only involvement is when we provide the funding, whether it be operational or capital, right?
Right, but again, because that is a significant portion of what they receive, 87%. Basically, control means anything more than 50% on those various de facto. That's a tax kind of a standard, as well as kind of an accounting standard. So once you meet those thresholds and those criteria, you're automatically considered to be controlling those particular organizations.
And that's why they're part of the consolidated statement.
Yes.
No, no.
Yeah.
So so as our CAO pointed out, town of Stratford doesn't make a contribution when it comes to capital.
That's right.
Does the University of Prince Albert, do they do they contribute financially?
Yes.
Both, fun, operational and.
And capital.
And capital, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no problem, no problem. So on that line that we're at, in terms of the recreation revenues, as I mentioned, that does include the CARRY and Civic Center. So of that 5.6 million, the CARRY is about 3.5 million of that. The Civic Center is about 1.4 million, so the CARRY would be at 100%. The Civic Center would be at the 80%. And then the remainder would be the city recreation revenues, about 800,000 in total. So they're up from the previous year. As I mentioned, CARRY and the Civic Center amounts are up about a million, and about 80,000 or so would be the city component of recreation fees that are up. I think we went over licenses. That would be the building permits that are up. Tourism accommodation levy, as I mentioned, that's up again with increased tourism and more accommodations units. The next line is miscellaneous, so obviously that's an item that's unbudgeted. So these are additional items that were received during the year, about 1.5 million. They were 613,000 in the previous year. The most significant portion of this is the kind of the finalization with Dine Holdings of development agreement for parking. So that's about 946,000. So those amounts had actually been received in previous years, so everything everything was finalized this year, and that amount could be recognized as as revenues. So that's about 943,000. The other significant amount, again, because unbudgeted because it's unknown at times, is there's a workers' compensation rebate during the year, about 200,000, as well as some insurance proceeds that were received during the year. Then we have the police protection services. So the budget was at 1.2 million, the actual at 1.47 million, very similar to last year. So this would be all the fines and tickets, so about 780,000 in both years. The other portion would be relating to various government funding projects, the biggest one being the mobile mental health, as well as some funding for cannabis training and guns and violence. Parking, the next item, the budget was a million and 25,000, the actual at 1,174,000. So this is all park aids in terms of kind of net amount of revenue, up from 906,000 in the previous year. The next item is the switch program. So the budget was 853,000, and the actual is very close to that. So these are the amounts from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in terms of the grant portion that's received, and up from the previous year as as additional activity during the year. Rentals for the year, in terms of various properties, down slightly from 557,000 to 534,000. There was one property that it was agreed upon to reduce the the rent of about 20,000, just because of Fiona and kind of some COVID interruptions. The next item is interest and other. The budget was 70,000, and the actual is about 168,000, up about 160,000 from the prior year, and the majority of that is interest, because, as I mentioned, the first page, there was additional amounts in various accounts during the year. So interest earned on those bank accounts had increased during the year, a combination of higher amounts, and the prime interest rates had gone up, so more interest being paid. And then the net income from CADC, the 15% at 161,000 for the year. So overall, the revenue's at 96.5 million, up about 17 million from the budget, and about 18 million over the previous year. So a number of areas there, the first two being property taxes and government transfers for operations being the significant ones. The next information then is the expenditures, again, on a consolidated basis. So the total for expenditures in the budget was 85.9 million. The actual expenditures were 92.7 million in the previous year. They were 74.4 million, so about eight, or sorry, 6.8 million more than the budget, and we'll see one line that's pretty much the majority of that. The previous year, the expenditures were 74 million, so they have increased about 18 million dollars from the previous year. So the very first line, the amortization, the budget was 10.2 million, and the actual is 11.6, the previous year at 10.4 million. As I mentioned, there's $50 million of capital projects during the year, many of those being completed, so we do start amortization in the fiscal year. So that is additional expense for the year. The development heritage and other, so the budget was 10.7 million, the actual at 10.2 million, the previous year, very close to that, at 10.2 million. So the significant items included here would be salaries, they're about 2.6 million of that total, and they've increased about 300,000 from the previous year, and that would be inflationary increases. It would also include transit, which is about 2.1 million in total, various grants during the year, which is also about $2 million. And so really, the increases from the previous year is elections. Obviously, there was an election last fall, so that was about 135,000 in total. That's an increase from the previous year, as well as some additional kind of professional fee-related expenses in terms of the BDO report, the CAO search, the great governance review. So all of those items are about $520,000 additional during the year. As I mentioned, when I identified that the budget expenses were higher, about 6.8 million, the main reason is a line called or identified as Fiona. So that's about 8.4 million, which obviously was unbudgeted, unexpected, hopefully never to happen again. So that's about 8.4 million. In the revenues above, as I mentioned, about 7.2 million of that has been covered by the province. So all of that 8.4 million is obviously various costs in terms of cleanup, equipment rental, tree kind of replanting, clearing and everything, so significant costs there. The next category, the general government, at 8.1 million budget, the actual a little over 8 million, and the previous year at 6.8 million. So that's an increase of about 1.2 million from the previous year. Again, the major component of this expense would be salaries at about 3.4 million. So that's an increase of about 300,000 from the previous year, with, again, new positions and inflationary increases, professional fees being up mostly in terms of legal fees, up about 50,000. As well included in this category would be the strategic plan, so that was about 125,000 during the year. As well included on this line is kind of short-term interest, as we saw on the previous page of borrowings for capital, kind of borrowing on lines of credits and such. So there was about $450,000 of kind of interest relating to those borrowings during the year. So that's an additional item reflected here under general government. Then we have the interest on the long-term debt. So on all borrowings, the budget was 4 million, the actual about 3.4 million, down from 3.6 million last year. Again, because of repayments made during the year, there wasn't any new debt that was interest-bearing. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities is a loan that's at 0%. Then we have Parks and Recreation, so the budget was 11.1 million. The actual expenditures were about 9.2 million, so under budget there. The previous year at 7.8 million, so that's an increase of about 1.3 million. And again, this line would reflect the amounts for CARRY and the Civic Center as well. And they would be, you know, the majority of the increase there would be additional about 450,000 of salaries for CARRY and Civic Center, and as well, even just the cities' park and recreation salaries, they did go up probably about 400,000 during the year. Additional amounts in this area, again, would be because of CARRY and Civic Center, just more expenses in in those areas as well, but also, as we saw in above, the revenues were up as well. Then we have the protective services. So the budget was 14.3 million, the actual at 15.8 million, the previous year at 13.2 million, so an increase there, overall about 2.5 million from last year. So this would include salaries for the fire department and police department, so those are about about 13.5 million in total between those two, and those salaries are up about 2.5 million in total, so that's the majority of the increase there during the year. And a lot of that would be due to additional staff, and also, you know, with Fiona, there was extra time there as well. Then we have the street maintenance and environment, so the budget was 15.5 million. The actual expenditures were 14.8 million, and the previous year at 12.6 million, so that's an increase from last year of about 2.2 million. Again, the majority of this would be salaries, about 9 million of that total is for salaries, and they were up about $2 million. And again, a lot related to Fiona with keeping seasonal staff on longer, working longer hours and cleanup. This also would include the snow removal, which is about 3.4 million, which is the same as last year, and the street cleaning and patching, which is about a million dollars, which is that's the same as last year. So in fact, it's it's the salary component that's up. The switch program, the next line, is very close to budget, and these would be the administration fees paid to Pace Atlantic to oversee that project. The tourism accommodation levy at 1.6 million, the actual, so that would be 528,000 for the surf events, 528,000 for Discover Charlottetown, and 528,000 for meetings and conventions, split equally between the three areas, and up from last year again, because an increase in tourism. And the last item there is the Water and Sewer, as we just saw in the corporation statements, those expenses were up about 529,000. Wages would have been the biggest item there as well. So to recap overall again, the budget for expenditures were about 85.9 million, the actual expenditures at 92 million, with the Fiona expenses obviously being the most significant reason for the increase over budget. And last year, there was about an $18 million increase, and salaries being, you know, the largest portion in each one of those categories. So initially, when the budget, and again, we're talking on a consolidated basis here, when the budget was prepared, it would show a deficit of about 6.5 million. But I do want to clarify that that does include a deficit of about almost 1.9 million for CARRY and Civic Center. So of of that portion, they were expecting budget deficits of those amounts. The actual overall operating surplus for the year, as I mentioned, the budget was about 6.5 million, including the deficits for CARRY and Civic Center. The actual result is an operating surplus this year of about 3.7 million. The previous year, an operating surplus, again, on a consolidated basis, of about 3 point, almost 3.7 million, so between the two years, fairly consistent. As we saw in the corporation statements, it obviously had an operating surplus, so it was about 900,000. It's going to be about $2 million essentially for the city. Then there's the CADC profit, which is reflected here, about 160,000. There is a loss for CARRY of about 40,000, and the Civic Center has a small profit. So the majority, obviously, of that 3.7 million, of course, is for the city. The other revenues and expenditures, so the government transfers for capital, a budget at 39 million, the actual at about $10 million, again, has to do with, you know, timing of when projects might be completed. So of that 10 million, about 8.4 million of that is gas tax funding that was used during the year for the projects, and the infrastructure or ISIP, about 1.4 million of that total. The municipal capital expenditure grant, the budget was 3 million, the actual is about $4 million in total, and that was the utility and the city together, based on kind of that about $50 million. There was a budget of an extraordinary item of about 2.7 million, and nothing is reflected there. And then we have gain on disposal of tangible capital assets, so a few smaller kind of older vehicles or equipment that were sold during the year. The previous year at a million was the sale of the parking lot to Rhodes. And then the last couple items are kind of items that are based on actuarial reports. So the pension expense for the year at about $1.2 million is based on the actuary report, based on the service of staff during the year. As well, it also has an impact in terms of the market, so the investment returns unfortunately were down during the year, and market rates were down. And then we have the sick and post-employment benefits at about 555,000, again, based on the actuary report for the the amount for the year, and then the pension valuation adjustment for the year. So those other revenues for the year are about 12.9 million, again, the majority of that relating to the the capital funding for gas tax and infrastructure, and overall the previous year at about 11.8 million. So the operating surplus, again, this year at 3.7 million. The other revenues at about 12.9 million results in an overall annual surplus of about 16 million in total for the city on a consolidated basis, up from 15.5 million in the previous year. And as I mentioned, you know, the key line is really the operating surplus, because the other revenues do fluctuate based on, you know, mostly to do with capital projects. I will kind of go over a couple other items here with you, just to kind of identify a couple items, so.
So, Michelle, just quickly.
Certainly.
That 3.7 surplus in operating is water, wastewater?
Yeah, about 900,000 of that, yeah.
The city. Did you also mention CARRY and?
CARRY has a loss in that total of about 40,000.
Right.
And.
And East Link?
Has a profit of about 150,000. When we have to consider, we have to exclude basically the grants and and those types of things. We have to kind of, what we call eliminate or identify transactions between the city and those. So when we kind of eliminate those, there is a small amount of profit for the Civic Center for the year.
And CADC?
Uh.
And CADC?
160,000. Your share of that would be the 15%, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to go to what next page is it?
So I'm going to skip over a few pages. I'm going to go back to, it's note number 13. It's page 19 in my copy, but I'm not sure what yours is. So it's the long-term-
Note 13?
Note 13, yeah. It's the long-term debt. It's page 19 of our financial statements.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's-
(laugh) No, it's 19. Uh, note 13. Yeah, it was revised from that, yeah. So it's identified as the long-term debt. Not sure what page it's on. 30? Okay, perfect. Thank you. So this does reflect, again, on a consolidated basis, all the debt that is outstanding. As we mentioned on the corporation, we do reflect a portion of the debt relating to the utility in terms of how much was borrowed that relates to the Water and Sewer Corporation. But these numbers here would reflect the entire amount outstanding. Because again, as I mentioned, it is, the debt is all in the name of the city of Charlottetown. So in total, there's 31.4 mil-, or sorry, 91.4 million is the overall debt for the city, down from 95.8 million in the previous year. So as I mentioned, there was obviously one addition during the year under the line identified as the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, from 902,000 to 4.1 million. Oh. Yep. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there's, I think, no.
It's not responding yet.
It's, I think it's overwhelmed.
(laugh) As would everybody, right?
I think the numbers, it can't handle the numbers.
(inaudible)
No, no, we're on 30, digital.
So the one, as I said, item that was added as a loan during the year was the Federation of Canadian Municipalities from 900,000 to 4.1. So there was additional amounts. And that relates to the switch program. So there was additional amounts that were advanced during the year. As noted there, it's at 0%. And the payments don't start until 2026, and they'll be paid off in 2045. And this, again, would be the consolidated debt amounts. The other item that I did want to refer you to, again, we'd skip over a few pages. It's note number 20, identified as page 24 in our version. So we might be at page 30, 35? Okay.
Is it page 35?
35.
Yeah, 35 in the tablet.
Okay. So the, this is identified, note number 20, as the accumulated surplus. So just wanted to kind of identify this as distinguishing in terms of the overall accumulated surplus. So the very first page of numbers that we did reflect, we did indicate that there's an accumulated surplus of about 214 million in total. And that was up from 198,000 in the previous year. So that was an increase overall of about 16 million. So I do want to kind of break that down. And important to identify that the key portion, the largest portion of that number, is the line identified as the investment in tangible capital assets. So that's 213 million. So that's the total that's been invested in infrastructure, again, on a consolidated basis with the water and sewer. It would include Kerry, it does include the Civic Centre, all of those assets, less any debt relating to those. So that's kind of the net investment of about 213 million. As you can see, that's the majority of what is the accumulated surplus. So the money has been spent in terms of the overall accumulated surplus. And what's going to happen over time is that number will go down because we're going to have larger amounts of amortization or depreciation. So those will, you know, decrease, you know, not drastically, but over a period of time. The other portions of the surplus is there's reserve funds also set aside for the sick and post-employment benefits. So there's about 1.4 million set aside for that. So the very first line is kind of what really is the surplus or deficit. So we're basically at a small deficit overall on a consolidated basis, in terms of what is available for, you know, surplus funds on a consolidated basis. So those are the consolidated statements. There is additional kind of notes and information, but I know everybody's up to here. Any questions?
Kevin, Councilor Ramsey, we have to have you recorded so the world can hear you.
Well, when you, two minutes ago, you said something was going to be paid off in 2044, was it, Michelle?
2046 will be the, 2045 will be the switch program.
All right.
That's the loan from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I mean, you'll probably still be mayor, will you, your worship?
Well, overall, it looks great, both utility and the city core. City Core Bank looks good. Any dividends? So Michelle, we'll be submitting the management letter next week. And I don't know if that goes back to finance, to the Santic Committee for Finance Administration. I'm sure it will. But we'll wait for that.
Yeah, it is addressed to the Chair of the Finance Committee, so.
Okay. Michelle, again, thank you for such a thorough report. Very well explained, layman's, layperson's terms, and looks good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a, no, I know, just before we do that, we do have Mr. Michael O'Grady, who's been waiting outside since 5:45. I know we have to pass this resolution, but is it possible to change the agenda to allow them to come in and speak so they don't have to stay here? Is that all right? Sue, do we need a vote for that? I know that, but okay. Can you read that resolution then?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Do you need another signature?
She can get it later.
Okay. Do you want to read the resolution? Just wait, Michelle.
Moved by Counselor John McAlaire and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that council approves and accepts the 2022-2023 City of Charlottetown Consolidated and Charlottetown Water and Sewer Corporation audited financial statements as presented by Michelle Burge, MRSB.
Okay. Move out. Questions called. Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. Thank you very much. All those in favor? Counselor Dran?
In favor.
Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
10-0. 10-0. Wow. Okay. So, thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much. Betty, thank you very much. So back to the agenda. We have to, we're going to move four. Do you want a resolution to that?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor McKenna, do you want to move that?
Sure.
Move five to four. Counselor Beck, second. Question? Question moving number five to four. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
Counselor Dran?
In favor.
Okay. So it's-
Waiting, and...
No, I said yes.
Yes, I know, we're ready to go. Okay. So, the item is, Sue, do you want to... Should I let the Chair of Strategic Priorities, Communications, and Intergovernmental Cooperation present the issue?
All right. Thank you, Your Worship. So, the information, I'll try and make this as concise as possible. This has been an issue that we've been addressing since back in March. Sue Fraser, in conjunction with Janice Harper, has done a lot of work on it in terms of accessing the Housing Accelerator Fund. There was some original correspondence that was submitted in June. Minister Fraser came back with some revised guidelines, I guess, or revised suggestions. We, as a council, and we shared them here with you in previous letters, suggested that there were some areas that we wanted to have addressed, changed, and it centered usually around the four units as of right was the primary area of adjustment that we were looking at. Basically, what we ended up doing following the October meeting is we've... There's been some ongoing exchanges that have been taking place. Originally, we were looking at achieving the as-of-right through what we call net residential as-of-right, in terms of going along with what was in the original plan about, or the draft plan, looking at corridors and nodes. Now, what we have before us here today is basically a revised letter with a couple of key points, I think, that have to be made. First of all, this is a process. It's a process that we are going down, that we are entering into negotiations with the federal government. That's the first part. The second part, I guess, is there is a significant pot of funding that is available there for us to access to help expedite our building. The other part about it is, and this centers around the as-of-right with the four units, and there is an insertion of a word which is, if you see in the letter, "as appropriate." And "as appropriate" would make sense, it's kind of tied into the other part, the other stipulation, that we have to look at making amendments to our official plan and to our official bylaws as well, too, which would involve public consultation.
That's right.
So, there are some moving forward items, but there's also a lot of work that still has to be done. As part of this would be relaunching the official plan discussions, re-engaging the public consultation on the official plan, and how all this integrates into helping to move forward on the Housing Accelerator Fund, and to be able to tap into some of the funding that is available there to it. So, that's a quick hitter in terms of a background. I will entertain any questions or any discussion that any councilors have.
Sue, did you want to give any background, or you want to just leave it as is? Good. Councilor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering, because I read here that the city is prepared to... City is prepared to allow for an increase in units equal to or above the equivalent allowing four units as a citywide. And I think you touched on that, Norman, and further down here, I'm seeing... Yeah, well, I guess my question comes, so, because you talked about going to a public consultation, but what I see here is still saying that we're going to allow single residential units that are zoned R1 now, that we're going to allow all them citywide to become a four unit exclusively, that it doesn't have to come to council. Is that correct? Because that's what the minister was asking for.
Counselor Beck.
That's where the "as appropriate" part comes in. I think there's still some details to be worked out with regards to all this. When I reiterated at the start, this is part of a process. What applies, and I mean, this is being offered in various municipalities right across the country. What applies in Brampton, Ontario, Halifax, Nova Scotia, Calgary, Alberta, may not be applicable in Charlottetown, Prince Edward Island. So, that's part of the ongoing part, where I think it's important that we understand that we're not against densification, we're not opposed to densification, it has to be done appropriately, and we look forward to figuring that part out as we go on the official, down the official plan route. But, and that's where the "as appropriate" part is added, to look at that and say, is it appropriate to expand on that in a particular part of... So, that's part of the future discussion that we would be having.
Yeah. So, okay, so if I understand it correctly, we're not committing 100% to it. We're going to look at each side individually.
Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Because you're going to have a flood of developers, you're going to want to take every piece of land in the city and build a four-unit on it. So, I just need to know, are we looking at...
No, we still have a...
Are we going to have a meeting on each one to change the zone?
But we still have a process we're going through, and that is an overhaul, comprehensive review of our official plan, which will filter down our land use policies, i.e. our land use regulations, that is, our zoning development bylaws. So, that all has to take place, and we've already started it, and we've made it very clear with Upland Consulting, getting out in the public in four public meetings, that we have to increase density, and that's why the...
Not against...
No, no, and that's...
We talked about increasing density in the corridors and so on.
No, I know.
So, I mean, and I think this has touched on it, that that's where they were going to push most of it.
Yeah.
Still not saying, you know, we're not going to let established neighborhoods, all of a sudden, a bunch of four units pop up for an individual, there's a lot here and there.
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to get clarity on, you know, what are we telling the minister here?
Yeah.
Are we saying that we're going to be okay with it? Or are we saying we're going to be reviewing those?
That's why "as appropriate" is something that we inserted in our response. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, or the Chair.
Yeah, that is a two... I guess there's a two-part to that, Counselor Bernard, and one is a level of appropriateness, and the other part is revamping of the official plan. It has to be tied, there has to be both.
Yeah.
Right? I think it's important that we understand what the implications of this are and how it does fit. Once we get that official plan adopted, and that would be part of the discussion, there will be opportunity for public input on that, public consultation on that. So, that's the part where the devil, the details have to be worked out a little bit later on. So, it's a general agreement, that's where the inclusionary part of inserting that line in there is that it has to be for an appropriate development, and it has to work, it has to make, has to fit in accordance with what our official plan is stating. So, there are still some things to work out in that, and so that's why those two lines are in there. They're there, that this is the understanding that we are willing partners, we have some key initiatives that we're looking at, which are outlined in the letter as well, but there's still some things that we have to figure out at a later point as well.
No, thank you. I guess what's got me is, number one, where it says, "At the request of the minister," the city proposes to remove any exclusively single detached zones and to permit up to four units as a right across a city as appropriate. So, proposed initiatives requiring amendments to the official plan of the zoning and development bylaw will be part of the formal review process, including public consultation. So, what we're saying is, we're going to take this as part of our official plan to the public to say, do you want to have this? Okay.
Yes, oh yeah, no, no, this is far from over, but the response at those four public meetings, I think, was positive, but we still have to get more information, and we're also talking about getting rid of parking requirements. There's a lot to go on yet, and I think the minister wants to know, do we have an appetite to go, keep going forward? And I think we do.
Okay.
Counselor McLeir, you all right?
And just staying with that point, number one, as it says, "The city proposes to remove any exclusively single detached zones and permit up to four units." So, is... Am I right in understanding single detached zones to be like R1, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good to go. Counsel Twill?
Yeah, just to reiterate...
Yep.
What Counsel Bernard said.
Yep.
So, again, this is not a done deal.
No.
It's still got to go through the...
Consultation process.
Consultation process, and the residents, regardless where they live throughout the city, will be given the opportunity to participate and express their views as to what they would like to see in their respective neighborhoods.
Good point, Counsel Twill, because this is what the federal government doesn't have to do. They don't do a lot of public consultation, nor does the province. That's part of our job, public consultation, and as you know, we're not allowed to do in-camera meetings anymore, but they are. Anyways, can we just move on? That's all right. We're moving on.
Well, it always was a double standard.
Yeah, okay, we know that.
Actually, it's a triple standard.
Counsel Dron, Counsel McCabe. Counsel McCabe, Counsel Dron, you all right?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, do you have a resolution there?
I do, Your Worship. Moved by Counselor Norman Beck and seconded by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown address follow-up questions from the Office of Honorable Minister Sean Fraser on the matter of its application to the federal government's Housing Accelerator Fund with a new response letter as attached, and further that the mayor and CAO were hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Counsel Murchard, did you call the question?
No, I didn't.
Question's called. All those in favor? Okay. Counsel McCabe?
I'm in.
Counsel Dron?
Favor.
Okay. Motion to move to adjournment? Move, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Favor.
Thank you very much, and have a great night.